It's kind of tricky, especially it's kind of like southeast and west. You've got been over the trees on both ends. But it's a good, this is a good one where the food I belong.
He's still working on the instrument.
That's where, what would one poultry company use to fly up there?
You get like eat out.
Well, it's used to be. Well, it's not now.
Now you can do right now there on.
Does anybody got clean fingers or something?
There's not a lot, but yeah, they do.
Probably.
No, because I just learned that there's five or so.
Did it save for? No, actually it's the, it's the end there.
Aviation fuel through the roof, same as.
You know, I don't even know what it is right now, but I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what it is. So we were just in California. Six thirty three.
Something by the Jill Biden supporter that think that's so tight.
So where's that?
Fourth of July, it'll be seven thirty. All right.
We're going out there playing Pebble Beach again?
Play Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay.
It was beautiful too. I didn't play so well Tuesday and Thursday.
Did you take your own plane out there?
Yeah.
You have a long journey.
We need to play well on a course like that.
Okay, it's five thirty. Where are we going? All right. Call the meeting to order. This is the work session for city council, the city of Bella Vista, Monday, May sixteenth. For your indulgence, I'm going to just do one discussion item first because we have a staff member here. John, you wanted to talk about tethered animals in unfenced areas?
Yes.
A C O Pratt, do you want to come up, please? So you can hear.
What are we talking about?
This was an item that John wanted to speak about.
Well, someone wrote an email, I think probably several of us happened to do with that. They had a tether, their neighbor has a tethered animal in the front yard and somewhat menacing. And they questioned, they made several different suggestions from other cities. One of which was not to have any tethering at all of animals. They gave an example of a city who did that. I personally thought maybe that was a little harsh, but I thought it might be something that is worth talking about. I'm not sure tying the dog out in the front yard is the greatest.
His paragraph, that's probably.
I think he's going to come speak at the meeting next week.
Unsupervised dogs that are chained tethered or trolley in property owners' front yards not only poses a nuisance to other neighbors in the area because of the barking that inevitably comes with it, but it is also unsightly and does not fit in with the aesthetic appearance that I believe Bella Vista tries to promote. In addition to the nuisance it creates, it is also a serious safety hazard. Unsupervised dogs that are chained or tethered in unfenced, unfenced areas are responsible for a large number of animal attacks that happen every year. And I believe that the residents of Bella Vista should be able to utilize their property without fear of being attacked by their neighbor's dog. A C O Pratt, have you run across any animal attacks by tethered dogs?
None.
Have you ever had anybody speak to you about this?
Um, I've had four complaints of dogs being tethered, but they were single point tethered, which our ordinance doesn't allow for. It allows for the two-point tethers. I can tell you two of the complaints were unfounded, didn't see dogs, didn't find evidence. And one of them, he had a two-point tether, but he lives in a townhouse. He wasn't sure if he could put that up. I told him to go ahead and do that. And the other one is she's going to try to fix that, so.
Do you want to explain the difference between the one and the two?
So a one-point tether is when you directly chain a dog to like a tree or a stake. A two-point tether is a two-point tether from like a tree to either another tree to your house. It's kind of like a zip line and it gives the dog more area to roam and they're less likely to get tangled.
So our city ordinance specifically prohibits direct single-point chain or tethering. And we do allow tethered to is what we call a cable or pulley system. And then we go into ordinance and describe what those conditions are in order to meet that. And we say that a dog may be restrained by means of a trolley system or cable run if the following conditions are met. Number one, only one dog may be tethered on each cable run. Number two, the cable run must be at least ten feet in length and mounted at least four feet and no more than seven feet off the ground. The cable run must confine the dog to the owner's property. Number three, the dog must be spayed or neutered. Number four, the dog must have access to food, water, shelter, and dry ground. And number five, the tether must be connected to the dog by a properly fitted buckle type collar or body harness of a size appropriate for the animal. A choke type, pinch type, or prong type collar is not, is not permitted. So we, we do allow for these runs with a certain conditions, but as the officer said, if you tie them down to one point where they can't, it's like they're in a circle, you, you can't do that.
I, I, well, like I said, this guy said he was going to come to the meeting and talk. He knew he couldn't talk at this. But I, I gather that the concept is every time he's in his front yard, this dog is lunging at him, you know?
Is it on a one pointer or a two pointer?
I, he didn't mention that. I mean, it may well be on a two point.
Have you looked at it to see what the?
I drove by there, but it was raining that day, so nobody was out, so. So I didn't get a good look at it.
There wasn't a stay for the tether?
Yeah, well, I didn't see a line, no.
The address is Constance Circle. Does that ring a bell at all?
I was just out on there today. I didn't see any evidence of a dog that was tethered in the front yard.
Yeah, thirty-four is right on the corner. The, the complainant's address was thirty-four Constance. I drove by there. It's right on the corner of Constance and.
Yeah, usually I, when I get them out, I'll look, see like the lines left outside.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't see a line when I drove by. It was raining that day, so.
Okay. And by the way, the day I didn't see a dog, but then again, I wasn't really looking for one.
Yeah. Anyway, I just thought, bring it up, I.
Okay.
See what people thought about the front yard thing.
Any thoughts or questions before we move on? Okay, let's go back to the original A C O. Thank you very much. You go on with your family. Okay, new business. We'll start off with an ordinance. Taylor, you're up. Amending section one oh nine forty-two, Variances of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bella Vista to remove time limits of zoning variances, to reduce the required review criteria for zoning variances, to remove parking reduction considerations from administrative review and for other purposes. This is, this is coming from the planning commission?
Yes, under the planning, under the direction of the planning commissioner request, staff was asked to look at nearby cities to see how they kind of treat their zoning variances. And it was found that we had the most review criteria required at eight. Everyone else had two, three, or four. So we're aiming to reduce the current eight to three. And that is the strict enforcement would cause undue hardship and that the applicant didn't cause that hardship. And then the third being that it's intent with the zone that the request is in. And then the second one is just a code cleanup because last year we changed our parking requirements to get rid of them for non-residential. And so it's kind of moot to have that in the administration, administration consideration area. So we're just cleaning that up and removing that, or requesting to. And then the third item is removing the time limit constraint during that cross analysis or comparison with the other N W A cities. We were the only city with a time limit or expiration date of a Z B R of only a hundred and twenty days or four months. Everyone else either had no time limit at all, just let it run with the project, or they had a hundred and eighty days. So with the planning commission's recommendation, we're just requesting to just remove it and let it run with the same project intent. So long as nothing changes, let it run with that.
Let, let, could you clarify that, please?
Yeah, so instead of, so like right now, our process is you have to get a zoning variance and then you have a hundred and twenty days to start use of the land or, you know, start building the project. And with time, like time constraints, when supply chain issues and stuff like that, a hundred and twenty days really isn't feasible. And then other cities don't even have a time limit or expiration date on their zoning variances. So long as the intent or request does not change, so that's what we're requesting to do. Just let the zoning variance not establish. However, if the intent changes or they want to expand their request, yes, they're going to need to come back to the planning commission for a new request.
I think the rationale for the time, for the timeframe in there is to encourage that the project move forward in a timely fashion. This, that's my understanding in most other places. That it's not there in limbo. In other words, you don't get the variance approval. And then you can wait forever and not do anything for two or three or five years. So the idea is that you make it timely so that maybe things will change in that window before they start. If you put a, a completely unlimited timeframe in there. And so you might have a different set of conditions or you might review it and approve it differently at a certain point in the future because of things that have changed around there. So your review has a window in it that you're looking at based upon certain circumstances. So what they're trying to do with that timeframe is to say, okay, we, we concur with the variance, but you have a limited timeframe to initiate it. Typically, those are six months, sometimes a year, but usually not longer.
Yeah, I think Bentonville has a hundred and eighty days, six months. Springdale does not have an expiration date. They're forever. Rogers, they are forever unless it's with an L S D. If it's an L S D, then it's six months. And then I believe Fayetteville is, does not have an expiration date.
And the planning commission is asking for no expiration?
They are recommending approval of no expiration.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. Yes?
What was the other thing that you were talking about? The time?
With the parking?
Parking, I don't see any problem with that.
The review criteria reduction was the third?
Oh, yeah, the criteria. And, and the criteria again would be reduced from the eight. And, and the history on that is that Chris Sunnison felt it was better to break down the, the basic four criteria that are normally used by most everyone into little bites and pieces so that the public might understand the variance question a little easier. So that's why you ended up with that many.
Anybody else?
I would just, we're trying to simplify the eight because the eight that are there right now are really hard for the average people to understand.
Well, they're no less difficult than the typical four that you find for variances. The intent was to make it simpler, so the average citizen would understand what you're trying to get to.
Well, that's what we're hoping to do with this amendment is make it a little easier to understand.
Okay, staff is requesting a third and final on this?
Yes, please.
Would you, would you concur with going back to four, which are the typical four?
You're putting Taylor in a tough spot because the plan, she's not the planning commission.
I understand that.
Yeah, I guess my feeling is the planning commission has dealt with these things all the time. Then they notice some things that, hey, maybe this isn't the best way. So usually their, their ideas are pretty clear. I think it's a good idea if you do three. On the time limit, I think you could make an argument to maybe do it a year. I mean, things are a lot slower than they used to be, but if you give somebody, somebody goes to all the trouble to get a variance, I could see the hundred and twenty days running out on you. You kind of go to all that trouble again. That doesn't seem right.
Well, it gives them adequate time to pull their permits, to get their approvals for their building permits to start moving. And all they have to do is show progress in terms of starting the project. Am I correct in that to, to activate the permit?
Well, once they pull the permit, it starts. Once they pull, once they pay for the permit, it starts.
It starts? They don't have to do anything on site?
They have to get a building permit or make use of the land. So basically building permit or build the footings or whatever they're doing. But right now, the issue is that they're having a hard time even finding a contractor in a hundred and twenty days.
They don't wait to buy materials until they get the variance approval, so.
Yeah, well, the variances are first thing and then they get, go from there. But I think the important thing would be is that to ensure that it's not indefinite because times, things change. And I've seen projects where they come in and get an approval for a variance and they put the property up for sale. Now it has a new value.
Yep.
I've asked Doug to talk to the chairman of the planning commission.
Well, if they put the land up for sale, would that?
They just want, they just wanted to make it more marketable. Not that they wanted to build on it, they wanted to make it more marketable.
Well, the applicant, the variances in the applicant's name, if they sell the home to someone else, then that's not sure.
But typically, typically the transfer is not much of a problem.
There's a lot of assuming going on here that's not correct. Taylor, you were going to.
I was just, well, I, I did have one clarification question. And this did require a public hearing, so I was just going to ask for clarification. Would, if we do change it to a year, we'll have to go back?
No, no, the council can legislate as they see fit. The planning commission's made a recommendation. And so that's what you have. And so they, as with any ordinance, you all can recommend amendments or strike provisions you don't want to do or what, you have full authority. You don't have to go back to planning commission and have another public hearing on it.
So is, is a variance of the planning commission, is that final? Or does, does the, does the council have any?
No, on, we used to have a board of adjustment. We, we, we got rid of the board of adjustment and folded those duties as state law allows into the planning commission.
Right.
So if a, if the, if the planning commission approves a zoning variance, then it does not go to the council. The only, that, that would be the final word. If it denied a zoning variance, it would go to court. It would not come to the, to the city council, excuse me. So the city council is sort of out of the zoning variance business.
Other than the guidelines for?
Other than obviously setting the ordinances, yes.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you. The next ordinance is amending section one oh seven, three seventeen, access management of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to provide clarification regarding access drive distance from intersections and for other purposes. This too is coming from the planning commission. Derek, you're on deck.
Yes, sir. So we're looking at this section one oh seven, three seventeen B here. This provides for minimum separation distances that a new driveway. So you're imagining a lot that's under consideration for development. They have a pending building permit. They're trying to figure out where to put their driveway. This provides that if the driveway is within so many feet of, or if this is at the intersection near a higher classified street, so like a residential street coming in contact with a collector, say Highland, Highland Street over here between Rogers and Chelsea, requires that, that new driveway would have to be a hundred feet away from the intersection. And we're finding that this is creating a difficult situation for a lot of applicants who have a legally platted lot at that intersection. And so this is a minor change that would allow the driveway to be placed anywhere on that residential street, so long as it's not in the site triangle. And the separation distance that's in the code, the hundred for collectors, two hundred and fifty for higher classified streets, that would only apply if they were wanting to put their driveway on that higher classified street. So it's a small change, but allows for more flexibility for people to put their driveways in a safe and legal place on the property.
Okay, questions?
I understood from the, that the planning commission proposed a potential ordinance that would have prohibited the house at fourteenth Constance Circle from being built.
That's a different topic from.
And they did, and so that, but that needs a little more review in terms of. I want to look at that some more in terms of our stormwater erosion permit. And they, they have made some recommendations related to those sorts of situations. But that's, but that's different than this.
So that's not coming up this meeting?
No, no, we, we're not able to get that done. It's a special time to get it on this agenda.
Doug?
I was, I was just saying this ordinance would allow a corner lot to build a driveway. Whereas our code now sometimes prevents a corner lot from being built.
Do we have any criteria that says on that corner lot that it be as close as possible to the farthest lot line? In other words, that it be adjacent to the lot line, farthest away from the intersection as possible based on the code? And then, and that brought me to looking at sub item E. E one says access drives located on residential and sub collector streets shall be located a minimum twenty-five feet apart as measured from the center line of the drive. Well, if you take a lot line and twenty-five feet from the center line to center line, if the, if the driveway is twenty-five feet wide and you allow it to be at the lot line, you go twenty-five feet for this driveway. And you go twenty-five feet for that driveway, it makes the center lines twenty-five feet apart, but they're touching the lot line, so there's no separation. So is there a minimum space between the property line and the edge of the drive?
There's not, so long as the, one thing that we do check for is to make sure if it's a slope situation that they're meeting the land alteration requirements for cut and fill sections. So to make sure they're not putting fill onto the neighbor. But we're, we're looking primarily at this section B. And right now, it applies to these situations where like, if you're going to envision a residential lot, a lot of them are not going to have frontage of a hundred feet or two hundred and fifty feet on either of those streets. And so this is basically saying, so long as you put your driveway on the lesser traffic, the residential street, you can do it just so it's not in the site triangle. So it encourages people to place the drives on the, on the lesser traffic street. Right now, even if you try to put your driveway on the lesser traffic street and you can't meet that two hundred and fifty or that hundred-foot separation distance, it's requiring a formal waiver process with the planning commission, which is kind of slows down the process for that.
But would you not want to still push that driveway as far as you can from the intersection because of staging of vehicles at a stop sign or the, at the intersection? So you'd want to move it as far to that lot line as you want. So would you want to put in some adjusting language in there to set it to the, as close to the farthest lot line as possible from that intersection?
I think that kind of level of detail really comes out during the plan review. And so there's so many, there's so many variables when you think of the topography in Bella Vista. I, we, we had not envisioned providing another restriction like that, but I think a lot of times that kind of comes out in the plan review. There could be a ravine that could make, you know, meeting what you just mentioned kind of difficult. But I think for the, for the most part, they are able to take a look at those sort of details during the, the plan review.
See, when I look at E one, which is, it could be twenty-five feet from center to center, I find that to be contrary to thirty-eight thousand lots in the city of Bella Vista. And I say that because in the plating process, Cooper has set aside a seven and a half foot drainage and utility easement along each property line right of way. So if you have a lot, a right of way here, seven and a half feet is a drainage. And utility easement on this lot, seven and a half feet here, so fifteen feet basically is no man's land. Because that has to be preserved as drainage and utility easements. And so if you have any drainage on the lot, normally it's going to be run along the lot lot. So if you allow the driveways to be flooded up to each other, you've not protected that utility easement and drainage easement along there. So you're telling people where they can put their house? No, you're not telling. Sure you are. Well, you're telling people where they can put your house. Well, that's true, that's true with all of our rules. But you're telling now, but you're making it more specific. You're telling where a guy can put his house if he wants to tilt it this way or that way? Or the lot runs different, or they're talking about dips and everything else in drainage? What I'm saying, what I'm saying, Alderman Wasniak, is that legally, they can't put the house closer than seven and a half feet to the lot line anyway. Nobody's questioning that. We're talking about an intersection. No, we're talking about, I'm talking about a driveway down here. And he's got your site triangle all figured out. No, this is, has nothing to do with site triangle. This is the distance between driveways. You're still telling someone where he can put his house and where he can put his driveway.
Well, the thing about saying you have to put the driveway as far as possible from the intersection, some streets are so quiet. And there's streets in Bella Vista that have two cars a day, literally. And you're making the guy put his driveway over as far as possible.
But John, you have to look at how many lots come to that intersection point. It's not how many houses are there today, how many lots are there? In some places, we have a hundred lots that are back there, but only two are built on.
Well, I'm talking about these short little streets that don't, you know.
Yeah, well, I understand.
They're all built up. There's four houses on it.
But you have, you have some that are a hundred lots back there with only two houses built on. And so, yeah, the traffic is pretty low now. And so put in that intersection right up, right up where you would have stacking space for a vehicle that would have to stop for the cross traffic on the intersecting street would not be a good idea.
How many exceptions are there that are being requested now?
We will.
It has to be a number of lots, too. And then how many of the exceptions that are being requested, how many of them actually get turned down?
So we see, we see around two to four of these kind of requests through a waiver in a, in a year. And whenever we have something that, a recurring request like that, it does, it does cause us to look back at the code and see if there's, see if there's a way that we can improve the way that that section reads.
Is it a good idea to modify the code to reduce the variances? If it's a consistent type repetitive thing?
Correct.
Larry, in the situation that you mentioned, ninety-nine percent of the time, the home is going to dictate what the driveway is, so the home can't be over on the property line. So the edge of the house has to be ten foot off. So that's where typically the garage driveway lines up with. You would have to build an additional driveway on the side to get over in that easement.
And that, and because of that, it raised the question would be in looking at the code, is E one says they can be a minimum of twenty-five center line to center line. So translating that, if you have two adjacent lots, theoretically, you can have driveway right up to the lot line going twenty-five feet in the direction, so you've got a fifty-foot driveway there.
That would also be pending Cooper approving two utility releases side by side. Am I correct?
To, to build, to, to, to build a driveway over that seven and a half foot space that Cooper reserves, does that require a, a, an approval from them to, to put a driveway over it? I'm not sure if it does.
I have been told by someone over at the A C C that they are starting to look at that and are required because they have a restriction that does allow concrete in the side drainage easements, only the front. Because we were asked why we were on parking in the side or driveway extensions because they were looking at that. But I don't believe that they do allow in the side easements, only the front, based off the conversation that we had.
Only the front easement where they cross.
Yeah, where, to access the street.
Along their frontage, yeah, but that's a whole, you have to cross that anyway. But the one on the side is the critical one anyway to get drainage out of there.
Those are also private easements though, and so it's, it's a private process of the A C C that they determine, you know, when those things are compelling or not.
They're private because that's how they were platted? They really should be public easements under your jurisdiction?
Well, we don't want, unless we want to buy all of them in the city.
No, I wouldn't, I wasn't suggesting that, but normally when these are created, when these side yard drainage and utility easements are created in a plat, it becomes a public controlled right of way. When Cooper did all of these, it was in the county's planning jurisdiction and they didn't care. If it were done under an incorporated municipality, they all would have been public easements. And they all should be public easements. They should be under control of the city, not the private development. So.
But that's not the reality that we have.
It's not the reality we have, but we have to think about it.
So there's a, there's a house on, on Breck Knott that you may be familiar with. The driveway is maybe ten foot from the intersection. So does that mean they got a variance or didn't get a variance recovered?
Depends what it's built.
Depends how long it's been in the driveway.
Just built, just under construction.
Not sure about the the specific situation you're speaking to, but if it's an intersection of two residential streets, there's not a set there's there's not a setback buffer requirement for that driveway. You can you can place it just so long as you're not, you know, within the side triangle at that at that situation.
Yeah.
So so these that these setbacks for new drives that we're talking about in section B with this with this current effort, they're they're just applying currently to situations where a street comes in contact with a collector, a minor arterial or a major arterial. And instead of requiring that setback on both the the collector or the higher classified street and the residential street or the lesser street, this is an effort to to only require it on the higher traffic street because and and to allow that driveway to be on their frontage of the residential street.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, as as a clarification, do I understand this, that one and two of your revision are the same as what you have there now in essence? And then what you're adding is the site triangle restriction?
Great question. So we're adding number three as the site triangle restriction because while we were checking for that, we didn't actually have that codified. So that is a that is an addition. However, items one and two, if you read them word for word, they are different than as they are currently written. Right now, they read to where the setback applies to both streets, and this is an effort to codify it to where it only applies to the higher classifieds.
Higher active, higher higher classification.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Derek. Moving on to the first resolution, renaming Mold Lane to Mack Lane. Taylor?
Um, yes, I believe the the residents who reached out with this formal request to change Mold Lane to Mack Lane is here tonight if you have any questions for them. But essentially, they are requesting to change Mold Lane, which was established with plat Flint subdivision in nineteen sixty-seven, from Mold Lane to Mack Lane in honor of their late resident and a family member of theirs that is here tonight to speak more if you wish. But Benton County nine-one-one administration gave me their approval in writing and email April twenty-eighth before we brought this to you guys. So they are okay with Mack Lane in place of Mold Lane.
And no issues with neighbors or pending neighbors? They have sent letters out and they didn't have anybody pushback?
Yeah, they have reached out. Last I was told, they have not heard anything, but they might have an update, but I don't they I don't believe they've heard from anyone.
So the so the two people that live on on Mold Lane now are agreeable to this? The two residents there now are agreeable to the name change?
Well, the one one Mold Lane is here tonight, and there's only one other house on that forward platted area, and I don't believe they've gotten any rebuttal of changing Mold Lane to Mack Lane from them.
Do you know if the party that's requesting it has spoken with them and if there's concurrence there?
Dickie, do you want do you want to ask?
Now, they're right here, Larry. Do you want to ask them?
Do you know if the other party that lives on Mold Lane is in agreement with your proposal?
My stepdaughter reached out to them and they did not respond. She explained what she wanted to do and they did not respond.
And the reason for my asking that is I've gone through name changes on streets like this and one one party or two parties like it and the third party doesn't like it because it requires them and you as well to go through a lot of document changes and revisions to bring it all up to date so that now the new name is on there. So it's a it's a little bit of a a busy thing. It does take some time and sometimes people don't like to do that because of it.
You say you say you explained it to them.
Yes.
Did so in writing or in person?
Oh, I think she texted them.
Okay.
From what I understand.
Okay, I think I feel a lot more comfortable about supporting you guys. I understand this makes sense to me, but I feel a lot more comfortable to know that the other party that resides there is also supportive of this. Any way that you could try them again and and or have them have them speak one way or another, speak to the cities, speak to us at the city council meeting? It'd be a lot easier for us to prove this, to know that both parties that live there would want this.
Okay, I'll I'll reach out to my stepdaughter and tell her she needs to take another step.
Now, your stepdaughter is the resident?
No, I am.
You are?
But she's the one that wanted to do this.
I see.
And I'll be.
Is she a resident?
No.
Okay. So we would see you as the person requesting it, as the resident that lives there. We would see this request as coming from you. So.
I currently own two properties in the lane, so there's just two more.
Okay. And and there's just two residents on that street, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. It sure would be a lot easier for me to slam dump this if I know that both parties that live there want this to happen.
Okay, so you want it rotting or?
Any objection or or in agreement?
Text message or?
Yeah, we don't object to the requested name change. That's okay. Or, yeah, we we concur with the requested name change. Something something like that would be helpful.
And email the staff, would that be okay?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
So an email to Taylor would be just fine.
Yeah.
I have a question, just for informational. So is this a big deal with maps and GPS and all that kind of thing?
It changes it has it has it rolling it back to a lot of stuff.
If I put Mold Lane in my GPS next week?
Not next week.
It won't be there next week.
It's not going to happen, right?
But the records are updated. Yeah, the records are typically updated yearly, post office, social security.
Then another year after that, the mapping folks get it out there and get it into your GPS system.
And if you put in one-on-one town center, you won't get the town center unless they've changed it.
Right.
You would get to Metfield for years. So you can't live with that, John.
Some of that stuff gets stuck and it never gets corrected.
All kinds of name change things has to take place. Addresses.
Okay, let's move on. The next two are both about the Mercy Way corridor improvement. Emily, you're up for both. This is an expression of willingness to approach regional planning for an STB grant is the first one and a TAP on the second. So will you wax eloquent for us, please?
Yes. So during the course of our Mercy Way project, which you both are very well familiar with, we have gone a little bit over budget in our right-of-way utilities days. And where their city is therefore on the hook for more than twenty percent of the total cost of the project, we're currently, if if all goes to plan, we're currently paying twenty-four percent of the project. And as you know, with federal grants, it's meant to be an eighty percent federal, twenty percent city match type of program. And so I'm seeking funding to address this and bring our share back down to twenty percent. To speak to both resolution D and E, I don't know if that's allowed. They they look virtually identical in your agenda. And the reason why I had two virtually identical resolutions here is that one is for the federal Surface Transportation Watt Grant Program, STB GPA funds, which comes from a different pool of money than the second resolution, which is the Transportation Alternatives Program Funds. And the reason why I'm applying two is just to increase our chances to get the funding and close out the project on budget or under budget.
So one of the additional costs that we encountered was because Cooper wouldn't give an easement to Carol?
That's correct.
Okay. So what's happened is Cooper owns the land that's beside the veterinary clinic. Veterinary clinic, empty land where he's got all the rock and the bridge. And so Carol Lutrick wanted to move the poles back onto the Cooper land and Cooper refused to give them the easement. So what Carol now has to do is put in a steel post and run the wires across the street over to the Mercy Clinic side, put another post in, and then run the wires back to the other side of the street so that it's not in front of the Cooper land. And that's a hundred and ninety-six thousand?
Uh, total is a hundred, right around there, yep.
Yep. Something no one ever thought was going to happen.
Emily, do you apply for these simultaneously that you might?
Sort of. They they require two separate applications, hence the two separate resolutions, one with the STB GPA and one with the TAP. The TAP program, we're applying the funding through the RDOT, so we're applying for that pool of money. And then for the STB GPA is through regional planning. And so they are separate applications, but very similar, and they're both due in June.
Do you ask for a specific dollar amount?
I will be asking for a specific dollar amount.
Will they be equal on each of the applications?
It will be equal on both of the applications, and I have received assurances from both RDOT and regional planning that we won't we'll get double.
You won't get double.
So if we don't get the grant, then we are paying for it, a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So is that a hundred, two percent is a hundred and ninety-six thousand? Is that the translation here?
Never quits.
Uh, that's a little bit more. The funding that I'll be seeking is about three. Oh, go ahead.
We're not talking about pocket checks. It's it's a substantial dollar.
It's substantial.
More than care about pocket.
We've exhausted every other option that we have. This is not a eminent domain opportunity?
Well, Carol has the eminent domain authority if they really wanted to put the wire, but they would have to pay Cooper for the easement. I'm surprised that Cooper wouldn't want some electrical service on that property. That's that's my why in the world would they not want access? But I guess we're talking about transmission lines, not regular access lines.
They'll have it on the property and it's just there won't be there's there's a wire running across the front.
But but so anyway, that would also go to the cost of the project of having to buy additional utility easement across there for Cooper, which which would they're not going to do it. They're going to want us to pay for it because it's our project. This is probably the least expensive way to go.
So was there any reason given for not giving the allowing this easement?
Nope, just no.
No, just no.
If they don't want to borrow your expense.
Don't get mad, get even.
That's it? I didn't say that.
The other important thing, but just to me, the engineering and running it back and forth across the street just seems really awkward.
Yes, it is.
Unnecessary.
I think we're all in agreement.
Sometimes the answer is because we can't.
Yes. Yeah, you're right, Larry.
Honestly, it could be a thought, they won't pay to do all that. They'll pay us for an easement so they don't have to do all that. And and maybe they're miscalculated. I don't know.
Thank you for the diligence in finding the money.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
You got it, yeah.
No, but it's largely largely out of.
I get to have a say about this.
So how long does how long does approval process take? Do you have any idea?
Applications are due in June. They'll turn back in August.
Well, if it's supported by local regional planning, some other folks, it's a good likelihood at least it'd make the entry level for consideration. So that's the important part.
Okay, thanks, Emily. Resolution F, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three-year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy cents for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment in your package. You can see the lease document. It's stretched over three years, so that's thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars a year. This is a heavier than normal amount. John, do you want to take us through it, please?
Sure, yeah. This is a following suit with what we've done for the past few years leasing computers. The reason there's more this year than in years past is because of kind of a collision in time. This is my fifth full year here. So we set a five-year maximum on computers. So there's computers that we bought five years ago as well as computers that we leased three years ago, expiring at the same time. So that's why there's a few more than normal on there.
You're catching up on the three-year program. I'm assuming is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Just a collision in time.
Yep.
Okay, any questions at all?
We've done business with Stronghold before, as I recall.
Yeah, all the leases we've done have been through the same company and format, yeah.
Okay, thanks, John. Final resolution of the evening is amending the twenty-twenty-two city budget to appropriate three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the police department to fund three additional full-time police officers, including equipment and vehicles, and one full-time police records clerk. You will remember during our budget discussions, I mentioned that chief had brought this to the table and we weren't quite sure just what was going to be happening with the internet tax. Was it going to hold at a certain level? Was it going to drop a bit? And also what the impact might be going forward on receiving less county sales and use tax or our share? I'm pleased to tell you that we haven't seen any any depletion at all. In fact, it's still rolling forward. So I felt it was appropriate at this time to bring this to you. Chief, do you have any comments?
I'm just willing to answer any questions. This is just standard growth to try to keep the department up to what I think is a reasonable level. Just rough numbers, we're about one point, one-six officers per thousand. FBI standards, about one-point-seven. I'm not saying we should ever be at one-point-seven. I mean, that's but but we should we should be somewhere a little more reasonable. If you if you had a chance to review the the annual report from twenty-twenty-one, the lieutenant did a great job in there really lining out some staffing needs based on calls for service. We take about twenty-one thousand calls for service per year and just really using some some numbers from the International Chiefs of Police Association Patrol Division specifically. We we need about thirty officers in our patrol division to handle those calls for service. We currently have twenty-six minus the lieutenant and an admin sergeant for that does some other duties that aren't really taking calls. So so really just adding these three officers alone, if they just stayed in the patrol division, wouldn't quite get us to where we need to be. But it's it's moving us along in a in a in a manner that allows us to keep up with the current the current capacity of our calls for service, which has been pretty consistent, over twenty thousand calls for service annually. And then allow the department to grow with other other services we're offering the community. As far as the civilian records clerk, we're even worse off on the on the civilian side as far as an apartment. If you if you look at other like departments around, if you saddle Springs, Benton Billy, just throw in some other departments on the on the average civilians per thousand. And so this this really will come into play, this record, full-time records clerk, when we get to the new station. Currently, our our front window and records is kind of handled by dispatch in the new building. Dispatch will be in a different location just doing dispatch. We want to move those records functions to a full-time records clerk and some other functions along the way as well. It takes some of the the admin functions off the command staff right now that they do. So this is just a growth thing as we as we move along, and I'd be willing to answer any questions you have. I did look at because these are these are new officers, I looked at impact fees for vehicles because these are new vehicles, not not replacement vehicles. We weren't quite at an area where I thought I was comfortable using those because the percentage of the department had sort of in the bank was about could about cover one car, but I thought we'd just hang on to that, continue to let it grow and maybe revisit that next time I ask for new positions with vehicles. We might be able to use some impacts fees to offset the vehicle expense. So and this is prorated for that amount is for three vehicles, the equipment and the officers and civilian prorated for about fifteen pay periods and they're left in this year, approximately fifteen pay periods. If you look, if you're going to ask, you know, what's going to cost moving forward for the positions next year will be for for the salaries and benefits, about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for the three officers and the one civilian next year when they're funded fully into the budget for an entire year.
And that's 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 full year, two-twenty. That's that's the personnel cost, staff cost. This is more because it's got vehicles.
This is more, yeah. So just the staff cost, if we took the 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 equipment and the vehicles out of it, is around, where am I at, three, hundred-five, twenty-three, about a hundred and hundred-and-thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense. Chief Graves, how many vacancies do we have for officers right now?
Right now, so so we're authorized thirty-six commissioned officers. We are still down one. We've had a rough time building backup like everybody else has. It's it's a rough market right. market right now, but we've, we've done better than I thought. And so we're down one. We have a couple in the pipeline certified. I think we're doing some more testing this next few weeks. And so the, the, we're, we're testing constantly now. So we're, we're recruiting constantly. It used to be kind of a once-a-year type of thing, but now it's just a constant ongoing thing. So that's just our goal, is to continue testing, continue recruiting. We draw on certified officers from, from Missouri, from surrounding agencies. We don't recruit from other agencies, but we do draw them in just because people hear about Bellevista, they hear about the department, they hear about the community, and they want to come work here. So we have that to our advantage.
And my final question, chief, is, is there a bit of an offset with regard to overtime? When we bring on new officers, does that mean what we're paying in overtime to existing officers, there could be an offset?
You know, I would like to say that, and I, and I hate promising, yeah, you know, we'll reduce our overtime budget, because it, it, you would think it happens, but it doesn't, it never really quite seems to work out like that. You would think logically it would, but it just, it, it just, we're always sort of playing catch-up. You know, in, in the government sector, you, you can never staff for what you need right now, because you have to prove you need it. And to prove you need it, you have to show. So it's just kind of always this catch-up game. So I would say it could offset it somewhat, but, but honestly, you know, we get these officers in, and we're still going to be down based on what we need, based on the new growth, and so the overtime will be needed for that. So I'm not going to lie to you.
I didn't think you were.
And you have an internal candidate from dispatch who's interested?
Yeah, so for the records position, it's important to us that we have somebody who knows what they're doing. And so we actually have an internal candidate from dispatch who's probably going to want to take that position. It worked out well for us, and so we'll just basically roll that person into the records position, moving along, get them ready to move into the new building, and then just recruit for another dispatch position.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for the mayor. I was wondering, what's the advantage, given the, that you have to spend impact fee money in seven years, what's the advantage of not, of spending it?
In not spending it now?
Yeah.
Well, it means that we might be able to buy more things with the impact fees going forward. It's as simple as that.
Yeah.
Mayor, I can answer a little bit. So I, I was gonna spend it, to be honest. We, I need fifty-seven thousand dollars for a car with equipment. That's a rough number. It's usually a charger fully equipped. When I was looking at the numbers, I was working with Kim, I was working with community development, and it looked like we had about fifty-nine-thousand sort of coming in, but then I was told that really some of this money, we don't get it until, uh, the.
Certificative occupancy.
Certificate occupancy. So I couldn't, I couldn't promise, I couldn't be promised all the money was in the bank. So I thought, it's, it's so, it's so close and not having enough money there, so I didn't want to say, hey, I can use that money for one of the cars, and maybe I was going to be short a little bit. So.
Yeah.
We're going to revisit this again next budget cycle. I'm going to need some, some new positions then. And if, if financially we can do it and it's approved, I can use impact fees at that time. We'll have that money in the bank. We can probably.
Sounds like you're confident that you're going to be able to use it.
Oh, yes. No, I have no, I have no doubts. We'll, we'll have enough in there to offset it.
I, I don't disagree, John, with kind of the thought process there, and that is, when we get the opportunity to use our impact fees for something as concrete as this, I think we ought to, we ought to do that. And it doesn't, you know, I'm not saying we ought to do it in this case. I'm just saying, we ought to be looking for that opportunity actively, and as soon as we have it, to be able to demonstrate.
Spend it down.
This is the impact fee. This is what I went for. In a real clear case of, of kind of intent, then I think we ought to, we ought to do that.
Well, great. Does the impact fee have to equal a whole unit cost?
No.
I mean, I, I'm not even advocating for spending it. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, in the real world, if you're like ten dollars short, you could pay and then pay ten dollars out of, you know, our general fund, if we wanted to. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And that's, I was just trying to exactly keep it clean, just so we had an exact number. We're looking at moving from general fund over to PD to, to cover these expenses. And that's not, I mean, you know, that's just what I was trying to do for you.
That makes sense. What about animal control? How many people do you have in animal control?
I have one full-time animal control officer.
And the discussion that, communication that you and I had, that person seems to be handling an enormous amount of calls.
They, they are doing a lot.
And so what, what are the plans for increasing there?
So, you know, that, those, those are on the long-term horizon. I mean, there's a lot of needs. If I, in a perfect world, I can ask for a whole lot now, but I know we can't for, but I do agree that animal control, and we looked at this in the past, but, but other budget things pushed it off, off to the side. But I think the, where to visit that in the future is for, for a part-time out-of-control position, as a part-time position. We had that once before in the budget, but it got knocked off for other reasons and never, we never revisited it. But that'd be a way to handle that as sort of a part-time position, that person, you know, there's no benefits. It's just a straight salary thing like we do with the part-time positions, and they come and handle weekends, nights, and other times when the animal control officers are working.
Well, I, I must say, and I know several people on council have done this, going to the citizens' police academy, you become quite aware of the many needs. There's all kinds of things we could have and use if we don't.
And I agree. What I really like is, you know, and I, I'm amazed every year when I see our annual report, and I apologize it was a little bit late this year, but we had, you know, that COVID thing at the beginning of the year again. But, you know, when you read the annual report, it just, I'm amazed myself, even though I see it, the, the things the department does over the entire year and the capabilities the department now has, it's, it's, it's quite amazing as far as I'm concerned.
Well, John brought that up. Another place, another thing I found out at the police academy is these new style vests that.
The outer carrier?
Yes. That are obviously much more comfortable than, than the, under the shirt vest. And one of the officers mentioned, I asked about what the plans were for all the officers having them, but that's obviously a sizable cost issue.
Well, no, we, we're, we're capable now to buy them all an exterior vest, and we're in the process of doing that. And so they're all, they are all getting an exterior vest. My thing was, I didn't ever want to do a tactical vest. You see a lot of smaller departments wear these tactical vests. I think it looks too aggressive. K-9s, yes. SWAT, yes. But for your normal patrol officer, we have an exterior vest that looks like a uniform shirt.
Right.
And it looks professional, and it's a little more expensive. And that's what we are moving to, because it's more comfortable. But I've given my officers all the option. You may have talked to somebody who just doesn't want it. They don't all, they don't all want to wear the exterior vest. So if they want the exterior vest, I'll buy it for them. If not, they'll do a traditional vest against their skin with their shirt on. But the exterior vest is much more comfortable. They can get in there, rip it off, do some paperwork, put it back on. It's a lot easier to take on and off.
Okay. I just have one comment about the budget. I think last month, we didn't have our reserve for funds listed, you know, like the twenty-five percent reserve or whatever. And also, would it be possible to put like a month-over-month sales tax collection, so we could see the trends?
Sure.
Versus prior year. I know I could go to Kim and ask for one-off and do it, but.
No, no.
It's in the magazine.
Yeah. If you want to pull out all the magazines, you write them down yourself. But I know she's got them.
There's a couple pages of everyone.
I know, I know exactly where it is, Jim, but it's just as easy for her to turn it out so everybody can see it.
And actually, you're talking about the magazine being the AML magazine?
Yeah.
It doesn't balance to what we get.
Okay.
Never does.
Yeah.
Sure, Doug, I can do that. All right, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we get into discussion items. The first is considering a stipend for members of the planning commission. I had actually been talking to the chair, and he feels that given the extra duties that they now have and the continued growth, that it would be appropriate for council to consider this. I did reach out to Farmington, Lowell, and P Ridge. I stayed away from the larger cities because I don't think we're there at all. And so Farmington is two hundred dollars per regular meeting, seventy-five dollars for a special meeting. Lowell is a hundred dollars per meeting, and P Ridge is a hundred and seventy-five per meeting. So I'm thinking somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five per meeting might be appropriate. They meet twice a month. Are there very many special meetings?
No.
They're few and far between?
Twice a month, you can usually handle what you need.
They have work sessions, regular meeting.
And if you have a special meeting, usually it's because of a request of an applicant, and so they typically pay the bill on that anyway.
I don't, I don't recall a special planning commission meeting.
I don't recall any.
I don't know that that's ever happened, but.
Do we have provision for that? If, if a developer comes in or applicant comes in and wants a special approval, doesn't fit in your schedule?
Well, we have the development calendar, and so if it comes in, I'm not, I'm speaking for you, please. But if they come with an application on a certain date, the calendar dictates the, the approval timeline. So I don't know that we have a special, they can't say, hey, I'll pay for an extra meeting. Let me get my thing approved.
I think, I think the time has come for this. I have been able to attend a number of planning commission meetings recently, and I've served on the planning commission myself before. But in the time that I've been off the planning commission, I've seen the quantity of work expand, obviously with the disbanding of the board of zoning adjustments. We've seen that work funnel towards the planning commission. They put a lot of effort into it, and it is a really important city function that to, to not recognize this is not, you know, this is not compensating for their time so much as it is recognizing that there's expense associated with it. There's time and expense associated with doing their job. If they're doing it well, there's site visits, there's preparation for the meetings, there's the actual meetings themselves. A lot of these people are working people. They come from work, and they, they come straight here without dinner a lot of times and do their thing. And they're working really on behalf of us in a lot of respects. And I don't know what the right amount per meeting is. We're not going to change anybody's lives with this, but I think it's important to recognize the importance of their work and to find a stipend amount of some sort for per meeting, I think makes good sense. And that way, it's, it's even more incentive for them to participate fully. And I, I think this makes sense for us.
So is this a work session and regular session? So.
That's right.
In the.
Correct. So for the balance of the year, if we started in June at a hundred and fifty, it'd be a budget amendment of fourteen thousand seven hundred. And then as part of the twenty-three, we just roll it in.
Were you actually counting if they show up for the meeting, or just?
Well, I'm assuming they're all going to show up. If you don't show up, you don't get paid.
Which you plan.
Yeah.
Because it's tough, you know, it's more challenging for accounting if you go by the meeting. That's how the county does their meetings.
Well, and that's how all the other cities are doing it as well.
Yeah.
Larry?
Did, did I hear you say, when you did, you, you called Farmington, P Ridge?
And Lowell.
And Lowell. Did they have a difference between the members and the chair position?
No, they did not.
They did not. I'm suggesting that maybe we consider the chairperson to have a differential. There's more, there's some more responsibility there in coordination and other things that they have to do that. And, and am I wrong in that, Doug, or not?
I'm not sure.
You don't think there's that much more?
What the workload and extra duties would be?
Well, they have to sign the documents. Sometimes they have to make themselves available.
They sign the plans occasionally, but.
I, I'd like to think that there is an extra preparation time associated with the chair in the meeting to know, you've got to have your ducks in a row. You're the one.
You need to be a little more prepared than the attendees do. Well, I can tell you from experience as the A and P commission chair.
Right.
And, you know, I'm just saying, if you want to know if there's extra time for prep, there absolutely is.
Yeah, there is.
They don't just show up.
I'm not hooked up on any particular amount, you know, like, I think that's definitely worth consideration. And I don't think the, you know, the planning commission is sitting there thinking, it ought to be this amount, or it ought to be this. I think the gesture is going to be appreciated as much as any of that. When are you going to propose this? Are you going to put it on the next meeting?
I was going to put it on for next week.
Okay. I'm supportive of it.
Yeah.
Concept, concept wise, I certainly have.
Is everybody happy at a hundred and fifty?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Start there and work your way up.
Is, is it one fifty per month?
No.
Not a meeting.
So if you miss a meeting, you're.
Three hundred, three hundred per month. So I just ask, that's what I. Bold strokes there.
So what would you, so how much would you add to that for the chair?
Twenty percent?
Twenty percent?
You can fill your car up one time, now with gas. Or not.
Well, how big your tank you drive.
Okay. That's one fifty for each commissioner and a hundred and eighty for the chair. Okay. May I ask Mr. Kelly, that you put together an amendment?
Absolutely. And so the budget amendment would still need to be fourteen thousand seven hundred?
No, it'll have to go up because of the difference.
Sixty bucks a meeting for the chairman.
And then what department do I put that? I guess I would probably put it in your department. CES, okay. Yeah, I'll just need a total budget adjustment amount, whenever we put that through the calendar.
You've got June, you've got seven meetings, so you've got, you've got seven months, so you've got fourteen meetings. You've got fourteen times the number of members on your planning commission plus fourteen times the chair.
I'll be happy to do that. It won't take long.
Thank you. All right, moving along, the next one is Mr. Burke, city board and commission budgets slash reimbursement slash expenses.
Yeah, that got maybe jumbled a little bit, but what, we want to talk about here, what I wanted to bring to the city council is, after having read again in the quarterly report we get from the arts council, we see once again that, that board members are having to take money out of their own pocket to pay for refreshments and things. We've seen the art council really do right by the artists of our community. One program in particular is the artist of the month, which I think's been a really cool way to celebrate our artists. And, and so when I see in the quarterly report that we've got board members who are volunteers again to begin with, that are taking expenses, or, or taking care of expenses out of their own pocket, it makes me think that we could do better by them as well. This is nominal in the grand scheme of things. And so on the order of maybe a thousand dollars a year, was there a way, I've spoken with, with Demra first, and then also with Jason and with Mayor Christie, is there a way to hit the easy button so that some of these expenses could be absorbed by the city without rewriting ordinances or, or creating a different entity that has funding associated with it? But that there might be some, some way for the city to just set aside an amount of money to recognize that we appreciate the, the volunteers on the arts council. We don't really feel comfortable with the idea that they have to spend money in addition to the volunteering that they do. If we set a thousand dollars aside and said, you know, fifty dollars a month is going to go to the reception for the artist of the month, that would get us to like six hundred dollars. It would leave other expenses possibly to be handled by the city. This is not reimbursement for expenses. This is the city taking the expense as a city expense. So it's kind of a nominal, again, a nominal amount. It's again, more the gesture to say, we appreciate what they're doing and how they're doing it, and, and to put them in a position where they don't have to buy, buy cupcakes and, and buy soft drinks out of their own pocket.
So you're looking at a pretty cash flow for hanging another thousand dollars on the mayor's budget for his discretion?
I think so.
For something like that?
I think that's the way it ought to be.
And I, let's just, yeah, I support it. I don't have a problem.
I didn't think anybody, anybody else.
What about, what about other commissions? How many other commissions boards do we have?
We, let's see, we have the library that meets quarterly.
Tree board.
For about an hour. I'm sorry?
Tree board.
Yeah, there's the tree board too.
Order of construction appeal.
Yeah.
Do they have receptions, though, where they recognize like artist of the month, and they, you know, have the, yeah, I don't think there'd be really that, that, those type expenses associated.
Perhaps over time we see those, but I think, I think what's very visible and obvious right now is that the arts council has really leaned forward with, with good programs, and this is just a way to acknowledge that. And perhaps it grows over time. There was a secondary aspect to, to our conversations as well, and that is that recently the arts council was approached by, I think, our Carroll Electric, that they had a donation that they were willing to give to the arts council. And the arts council is not in a position to be able to accept donations. They don't have that kind of structure, that kind of financial, they don't have accounts and such things as that. And what I've seen, I thought maybe is there again, an easy button here, where the parallel would be something similar to what we've seen when citizens or companies come to the city and say, we would like to make a donation to be used for vests for our K-9 officers. And we, the city can accept that money and then put it in a restricted fund for use only for that purpose, right? And so I was asking Jason, is there a parallel here where we might be able to have a restricted fund similarly for the arts council, that if somebody out of the goodness of their heart wants to make a contribution to it, it would go into that account and, and again, be there to offset expenses of the arts council going forward?
There's a way, there's a way to do that.
And, and by resolution. That's why it's necessary to discuss it at the city council. It's not an ordinance change. It's kind of a. It's not an ordinance change, it's kind of a simple resolution.
So that's aside from the thousand a year, there's something else.
Yeah, this is the ability to receive funds from the outside coming in.
And, and some of it may be earmarked for special purpose, others might be more general. I mean, the money might come in as a more general type of.
Sure. I don't know how that happens or if it happens with regard to police work, for example, but I'm, I am familiar with the examples where there's a specific use intended for that money and we would accommodate that use if, if it's a donation. I believe there's a fire enable, it's not unique, there is a, a special fund. We've, we've done this before. I don't know how many different, finance, I could ask finance, I guess, but we, we do have some designated funds where we receive money as a gift or a special purpose and it was meant for a certain thing and we blocked it away and a certain, did not be spent.
Wayne was pointing out shop with the cop.
Shop with the cop is.
Yeah, exactly.
Receives a lot of donations, you know, out of the goodness of people's hearts, they want to make a contribution.
It sets as a, as a restricted fund.
Yeah. As it should.
Yeah. The Arts, the Arts Council has, yeah, there's maybe a lot of opportunity there for some city exposure because it seemed like the, the arts in Northwest Arkansas, I mean, has always been a big issue, it's becoming more, bigger issue and like, maybe there should be some way that we, that we could participate more in what's happening in Northwest Arkansas.
You're talking Demra's language there, she's, she's got some great ideas and I think, I think we're lucky to have her energy and her knowledge of the art scene and what's going on in Northwest Arkansas and what's possible for Belavista.
Well, how do we support that?
Well, again, there's any number of ways it could be supported, but first step, first things first, crawl, walk, run, let's just take care of this little piece of business today. And then I think you're asking good questions and I, I think we ought to be looking at as the city, if the city is healthy and prosperous going forward, that as we have more opportunities to support the arts in Belavista, we would do that, we would do that, within reason. Yeah, that's my personal.
I agree. As a side note, with the Belavista Business Association, does the city of Belavista belong as a member to that organization?
No, we, we can't really be a member of a private organization like that as the government, constitutionally restricted from something like that, even or not, so. Chambers of Commerce are a little bit of a different animal, but in the past it's, we wouldn't want to join, you know, the Arbor Day Foundation or something, we couldn't really do that, even though it's a good cause.
Yeah, okay.
So perhaps a resolution for next, next time, Jason, that's.
So how much money, is it a thousand dollars for their, how much money do you want to put in this fund for Arts Council expenses for this year?
I would suggest a thousand dollars and, and we can watch it and, and see if adjustments necessary in the future, I think that would, again, it's a gesture, it's not going to, it's not going to change anybody's way of life.
This, uh, but just to title Lou's ends up on the galleys, the Arts Council itself does not have any contracting authorities, they can't spend money for the city in any way. So really what this would be is a thousand dollars, it would be added to Department Ten, which is the, basically the mayor's part of the budget, that would be for Arts Council expense. And, and then, you know, the mayor would be in charge of that spending out of that account. How practically how this would work, I don't, I don't know. Because I don't know if we want to have to have the mayor go to Harps and buy the cookies.
I hope not.
And so there's almost going to have to be a little bit of a reimbursement.
Well, here, here's, here's the thoughts that I had, again, I'm always trying to hit the easy button here. If there were, if we purchased a fifty dollar gift card every month and that was designated as for refreshments for the Artist of the Month reception.
That's a problem because it may not be all spent and then there would be unaccounted for funds and.
Okay. Well, you guys tell me.
The auditors are not going to like that.
Fair enough. You tell me what's the easiest way.
The easiest way is to have Demra, the mayor receive.
I was going to say, why didn't she bring the receipt for twenty-five dollars for the cookie more drinks? And then the mayor could just say, I'll let you go, I'll give you fifty dollars to get reimbursed, but if it's more than that, I'm not going to approve it. So then bringing a receipt.
That mayor signs it.
Reim, reimburse and we've got a receipt for the city records and it comes out of a thousand dollars.
It'll be the same way City Council gets reimbursed for gas going down to A and L.
This is your lawyer speaking, the finance director may have a preferred method.
No, she'll be happy.
But I, I think that would work really.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Mr. Snow, you have the next two. First is green waste tax for, task force.
Green waste task force has met twice. I think our last meeting was probably a, close to a productive meeting. John was there, Linda was there and either one of you can jump in at any time here, but we, we've explored lots of opportunities, lots of issues, trying to come up with something that would be somewhat cost effective, not overly expensive and I don't know if there is such a thing. But our last, our last thought process was that Republic has a, a green waste pickup service that I think costs like a hundred and forty dollars a year, that's from April to November. And I think that someone said that there is like a, if you just give one, one of these trash receptacles for green waste, it's like fifteen dollars a month for just one, I believe. I, I haven't been, Ms. Fagan has not called me back to, to get some numbers and, plus I wanted to talk with her to see if there was some way that we could get some type of a, some kind of a better deal. I think Doug says there's like six hundred people that have subscribed to that service now, but, and I think they, they give you a different colored receptacle that.
I think the lid is black, I think.
Brown.
Brown.
The receptacle is brown.
That's all you can put in there is green waste and they pick it up every Friday.
Is it every Friday?
That's what they told me, that's what told me it's every Friday.
Wasn't our biggest concern leaves though?
If it's fifteen dollars a container, that doesn't hold many leaves.
You could put a lot. Well, you can get up to three per week.
That's for the same fifteen dollars or is it fifteen dollars?
Fifteen, twenty and like twenty-two. But you can have three.
Yeah, because I, I would be twelve.
Three totes.
I'm serious.
I need a dump truck.
I, I have two.
Well, you obviously couldn't do it one week, you'd have to spread it out over a lot of money.
And, and those, and those people that, that, that don't have very little and have got a neighbor that has some, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they probably can put it all, combine it all together, but.
You don't, you don't want to go there.
I'm not going to promote that. Everybody dug stuff.
As, as I said, I think they probably could.
I just go ahead and do my trash service too.
Green trucks with the black ones.
That probably happens, I don't know. But, but anyway, I, we, we discussed that what, if there would be maybe possibly a way that the city could get a, some kind of a negotiated deal with Republic and, and maybe to get the situation started, to try to get people to encourage people to use it, that maybe we could subsidize it for a month or two in some manner. Again, that's a thought based on having no idea what the total amount would be, what the, the total number of people that would, that would subscribe to the service. I see J B shaking her head saying, will work?
I mulch it. I mulch it and reuse it.
Okay. Well, and that's, and that's another thing that we, that we discussed was promoting some education through some type of a city email, a city newsletter. That's something that they, it seems to be a contention is that there's, there's a problem with communication in the city, that we don't, that we don't communicate with these people enough about different things as far as keeping them apprised of what's happening. One of the thoughts that, that we might could, put something in the, some type of flyer in the, in the water bills.
But if you pay online, you don't get a flyer. Because we pay online.
No, I think I get a flyer, I pay online.
Well, they gotta, they, they gotta, you gotta get a mail even if you pay online because they send you the connection magazine, which is from the P O A update.
No, that makes more sense.
You get a mail or any.
If you pay online, you may not open your mail.
Right. You may, may just toss it away.
I know a lot of people like the connection magazine.
Yeah.
And maybe we get something in there, I mean, that's, there's some things that still be worked out, but those are some thoughts. John, you guys think you want to add to that?
Yeah, that was pretty thorough. I, we, before we got to those parts, imagine, we examined quite a few alternatives and they're quite daunting. Particularly in the expense, I mean, I'm talking majorly daunting.
Millions.
Well, it used, used to be if you had a business card ad in the connection, it was ninety dollars a time. Now I'm sure it's up a whole lot higher than that.
I mean, as far as coming up with some land to where we could, there, there's opportunities there where we, if we had the land where this, all of this green waste could be dumped, then it would have to be wind rolled and then there are those companies that will come in and, and grind up that, all of that material into chips, but then that is very expensive, anywhere from five to eight hundred bucks an hour. They won't come for just anything, so we're talking about the possibility compared to Bentonville, anywhere from twenty grand a, a time for them to grind up this stuff and then, then what do you do with it? Do you give it away, do you sell it?
I had the opportunity to watch the meeting on replay, I think those kinds of expenses that you're talking about may be the least of the worries because when you get into having a place that people are going to come to and put their stuff, that requires you to have a fence, have staff, have a permit.
Yeah.
That allows for all those things to happen.
People all the time.
And that's, those are expensive problems.
Permit, permit is the number one obstacle there is getting that permit to, to be able to collect that, that stuff, so.
That's what I meant about Don.
Yes, yes.
Lynn, you got anything you want to add?
Well, I, I just forwarded the notes to Wayne to send out to everybody. I think the education part was really important because people need to understand that the best thing to do for your grass is to not collect the grass when you mow it, to let it sit there. The best thing for your leaves is to go over them with a mulching mower, then you don't have to burn them, you don't have to rake them, you don't have to do anything with them. Of course, if you have a stone yard, that's a little problematic. So that was the first step we suggested taking and I, in the notes are some other things. Landscape contractors can accept green yard, excuse me, landscape contractors can take green waste to the Bentonville facility Mondays and Fridays for free. Con, landscape contractors, not excavators, not anybody else, not residents, but landscape contractors. So that's something that can be done now.
That's something needs to be, we need occasions at least to be put in.
Right. So that's all in the notes that I just sent to Wayne to, forward to everybody.
Okay, Jerry, let's move on to building contractor concerns.
Well, a, a number of people, here's some photos if anybody wants to look at them, but a lot of people are familiar with a house at number fourteen, Constance Circle. This past Monday, this past Monday night, this past Monday night, the Planning Commission granted them a variance for a retaining law. Personally, I don't know what a retaining law will do for that particular property. I mean, first of all, the place, I mean, the house should have never been, my opinion, the house should have never been built. I don't, Doug, and, and I'm, by no means am I here to, to be up on, on Doug because I think Doug's a good guy, a good manager, but.
I saw it.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know why that, that this house, how it got built. I mean, how it got to this particular point. But again, this retaining law that they're going to, that they're going to potentially build there, I don't know what, you know, what purpose that's going to serve, but there seems to be a, a number of issues pertaining to contractors that, that the community, that people have got to reach out to councilmen to be able to get resolved. I know the issue over in your area, you went and dealt with some people where the contractor had several houses under construction, no dumpsters, I think you're supposed to have a dumpster on site, no dumpsters, trash was blowing all over the neighborhood.
I, so I was called by a lady.
Yes.
And I went and looked.
Yep.
And I, quite honestly, I don't know why you're referring to me.
Oh.
Because I didn't really see the issues that were being brought to me, so. And then I drove by, I don't even know how many other houses because I was just out and about, I think I contacted you about one and that's it. And then the next week, it was, it was the issue was resolved, so.
But it seemed like some contractors are not paying any attention to our guidelines. I mean, there's one right across the street from my house where they dumped like six loads of gravel in the street and the people that, neighbors couldn't get down the street and the people that were already out, I mean, that, that were down the street couldn't get out, those that are already out couldn't get back in, because they just dumped like six loads of gravel in the street. It's like, we have some contractors that are, that pay, that pay no attention to our guidelines, to our regulations, to our, like this one guy that built this house, I think he's been cited like six, six or eight times, that's what I was told, I don't know. And there's one house that he's built, that here's a picture of it, I was there today, drove by there today and this guy was trying to get his car in the garage, right up the street, he can't get his car in the garage, got the bumper scraped on the front and the back. Again, how, how are these happening? I mean, I mean, of course, this guy bought the house sight unseen, but through a real estate agent, looks like that real estate agent probably has some, should have some liability there for selling him the house and, and the condition that it's in. I was told by Doug's office that there has not been a conditional C of O, has not been issued for that particular house. But they had to go down there like five times to inspect it, to maybe get a final inspection and the C of O's never been issued.
Which, which one?
That would be what, number eighteen, Constance Circle, I believe?
Well, he's living in the house, right?
Yeah.
I hope there's a C of O.
I, I only say it's what I was told, I don't, I don't, that's, I can't verify that.
Eighteen or fourteen?
Not fourteen, two doors down.
Okay, the other driveway issue.
The right thing, Constance Circle. And then there's, is Harrington Drive, the same builder, got a lot on Harrington Drive and he was, he was dumping, he was dumping additional clearings from other lots onto this lot. And of course, the people down there, they live through the stump dump, so what do they think? We got stump dump two point oh getting started right here.
Well, he was moving it all there, I was told by Chief Sims because he was going to mulch it all together and on one lot.
Well, he was told he couldn't burn by Chief Sims, so he moved one lot to another lot to mulch it.
Is that the one that we checked out over on?
Yeah. I don't have any idea what happened to the, to the deck material that he was supposedly couldn't burn, I don't know what happened, if they got mulched or, or what, or if they pushed it off the backside. But then, then there's other situations where the contractors have pushed stumps and trees off into the ravine. I mean, just a number of issues. If you go on social media and look, you can find all kinds of people that are complaining about contractors and their trash. Their, their, their trash, their lunch, their, lunch, their, their beverage cans, they're still pulling them in the trash, they just scatter them around the, around the site. I, I know we got guidelines against that, we have regulations against that, don't we? I, I don't know, do we not have enough code enforcement, do we not have enough inspectors, building inspectors to, to deal with these issues or anything?
Well, I mean, we've got three hundred being built about any given week and we have six building inspectors and code officers still. In addition to doing their scheduled inspections, I'm not sure how they could get around to check on three hundred a week. But, I mean, they do see a lot of those as they go to, to and from inspections and when we get complaints, we address it. I mean, we write people notices and ultimately citations if they don't clean it up daily. But, yeah, there are a couple of months in there, once the house gets framed, where you've got a lot of plastic being shipped to the site that's, you know, you've got shingles showing up, you've got insulation showing up, you've got sheet rock, I mean, there's, there's a timeframe in there when there's a ton of stuff and, and the wind here blows a lot and so we make them build a container or have a receptacle on site and sometimes it does get blown out. we make them build a container or have a receptacle on site, and sometimes it does get blown out of that. But we do watch those frequently and typically we call the builder, they get it knocked out the next day, but there are a few that slip through that, but we when this came up last meeting, I drove around to thirty and only saw one that had an issue, so I mean.
There are always going to be bad actors. And it's like you talk about the deck that was dumped. It was really fascinating. I got kind of involved in that because the mayor wasn't here that week. Somebody drove over. It was the most fascinating thing and dumped part of a dump, a a a deck in a lot, right? And in communication with the gentleman that reported it. And what the most fascinating thing is, it seemed to think nobody saw it and nobody heard it and nobody anything, and I don't I don't know. I was scratching my head over it. And as soon as the word got out, uh, somebody showed up over there with like a little front end motor and started covering it up or whatever. But, um, you know, I don't know what you do about these one offs, kind of like you're talking about, because at the same time, I went over to check out another lot and literally I drove by at least thirty builds, at least. It's not hard to do because they're everywhere. And I really only saw one that was an issue. Most everyone else was taking care of their business like they're supposed to. So it it's like we have laws and rules about everything in our society, but does that stop people from breaking the rules? It doesn't. And we just have to do the best we can with the department that 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 we have. And I think they overall, they do a really good job. And anything that I've reported to them, they've been really responsive, have been on top of it and gone to the builders and got them taken care of. And you know, the the fire chief, if, you know, there's been an issue with a potential burn that's going to take place, you know, on a residential street in between homes. I mean, they've been on top of it just like that. So you said you're always going to have some of these things taking place, and it's sad. I wish everybody was perfect or acted like this responsibly, but they just don't. And, you know, I always kind of fall back on every one of our individual homes at one time was a was an a lot that wasn't built on that was a build as well. And I guarantee you, it was a mess too. Uh, its building is messy.
Well, I understand the bad actor part and understand that there are going to be bad actors. But if those bad actors, if they don't get cited, how many of these, how many, how many contractors do you deal with that you consider to be bad actors? I mean, how many do we have building? I know there's one this building across the street from me that you said that that I've heard that.
It's not using any particular names when we talk about them, just.
No, I mean, I didn't ask for any name.
No, I just wanted to make sure we don't accidentally.
I asked you for numbers. I mean, uh, and you're only saying a couple?
I mean, that that we seem to have a repeating issue occasionally. The driveway issue you talked about, we don't currently have a code that regulates the the grade, but our planning commission is researching other surrounding cities and that sounds like something they're going to make a recommendation to you all in the near future.
Don't don't we don't we have a standard for driveway slope grade? Isn't there an ADA standard or something that's regulating that in the first place?
We don't have one in code currently, but the planning commission did propose twelve percent max grade with a two percent administrative variance, and that anything greater than that, fourteen percent would have to get away with it from planning commission. But that is a section of code that, um, Mr. Kelly was talking about that is still being worked on for you guys, but we currently don't have one.
In the state or federal code that already prescribes a limitation on that slope?
That would be.
From an ADA standpoint?
Yeah, I'd have to ask Brad. I'm not aware of one.
I have to believe that there is something out there that would regulate it.
So our building inspector brought that to his attention several times during the bill process.
And so don't do we do we know, uh, on the platte survey, you have to have a platte survey to show the layout and it has elevations on there, has contours on there?
It does. We don't require a finished grade though currently.
And maybe we should require a finished finished floor grade.
That's being discussed with planning commission right now.
That is also being with the driveway slope.
Finished floor grade and then the grade on each corner of the lot in front of the property. That should be on the roadway so you know what the roadway is doing and what the land is doing. And those grades are on the lot because they have contour stroke, so you can figure out what that is. And then the criteria of such a slope limitation, I got a feeling there's a regulation out there now in Arkansas that's got a stipulation already. Just matter of finding out where it's where it's hit.
I can research that.
You been down Smith Lane lately?
Yeah, I know. I've seen.
There are probably some driveways around town with twenty percent gray.
No, I don't offhand.
It's on Cooper. It looks like it's forty-five degrees. Yeah, our street.
There's one off the Commonwealth that looks like it's forty-five degrees too.
I'm not talking about.
The driveway.
If you're going to do driveways, you're going to worry about the slope on a driveway. You're going to make a ruling on how long it can be? Or you're just going to make a ruling that the guy can't get his car in the garage because he he messed up or he's got too big a car?
But well, it makes no difference how long the driveway is if the slope is wrong. Because you've got the angles.
But you've got some wild and crazy driveways that certainly won't pass.
There's only two of those that I know of in the.
Well, there's one on Commonwealth.
There's one on Harborough Circle and then there's the one that the new one that just happened, the heat high center your car.
And he's even got an engineer drawing showing where he can get a car in and out of that with a little bit of tilt, so. We'll see. We'll see if that happens. But he's got an engineer saying it'll work.
And they're going to be able to go forward with that?
Well, the problem, I was at that planning commission meeting, the problem, which Daniel Ellis pointed out, is we get these things. And so now our choice is to give them a variance or tell them to tear a house down. They're just built. That literally is the choice you have. And that's why they want to make a change in the code, so you don't get to that point.
Well, if the grader is come enough to build a house where you can't get a vehicle down the draw, a normal average vehicle down the driveway, you ought to be able to hold and keep and own the house himself.
Yeah, well, you would think.
Or sell it to somebody that doesn't want to put a car in the garage.
That drives a Jeep with high rise.
Could affect his market value.
And and then you got one that's going to be underwater. Uh, anytime you got a, uh, a, any kind of a significant rainfall, you're going to have some which that house in particular, the resident told me they've seen water running through the front door and out the back door. You know, like a creek through there, but but if somebody wants to buy that house, I guess that's.
Well, that's what it comes down to is some people don't even think about looking at drainage at all. And they'll build a house or have a house built and there's a drain looking right at them.
Comes right out of that.
So he's not done.
The drainage on that house won't be engineered, designed and inspected before that gets a city vote.
Well, on Harrington, on Harrington Drive, um, that matter that that developed there, actually, they're they're dumping additional, um, materials down there. A a resident called the police department to tell them that they were dumping, um, uh, illegal dumping.
Well, I don't know that that's illegal, Jason.
If you look at the.
To do what?
If you own two lots and you moved debris from one lot to another, is that illegal dumping if you own a lot?
Not if you grant permission to yourself, no.
No, I said you got our our ordinance said you got to have a permit.
To dump anything. He does have.
You got to have a permit to 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 the dumping of tree cuttings, tree trunks, fill dirt and other appropriate fill material may be allowed to reclaim gullies and ravines upon paying a permit.
He's not reclaiming.
No, he's just taking, you're talking about taking limbs and putting it on your side lot. I that's I don't think that's implicated in that action. Now, if you're what you're saying is they're filling some giant depression in their yard or there's a hollow that's in their property, perhaps, uh, that would be implicated.
Putting in a decomposable material in there that's going to.
That is, since mulching it actually improves the the site for vegetation and runoff.
I don't know if you say any current use of the location for the dumping of stumps, vegetation, waste or dirt.
Jerry, I've got to look at the particular situation. I don't I don't have enough facts or the law in front of me to be able to fully analyze right now.
They they called the police department and report unlawful dumping. Police department does not show up and never contacts anyone to to make a, um, any response to their call. And then the resident sends a message to you and Mayor, to Doug, to the police chief, and nobody responds to his message.
Uh, who's that from?
It's from Chris Nelson.
I I haven't gotten anything.
I haven't got anything from Chris Nelson.
There's right there is, right there is, right there is his message.
Is that?
I don't remember getting this one. Or any pictures of it.
No, I don't want it.
Doug, did you ever get that?
I don't recall it.
Is that the one that had the the deck?
Yes, that's the one.
Well, I think you've gotten hold of me. That's people needing to.
Is this Harrington? Yeah, we were all over.
We handled that.
I was out there one day when the police and the fire were there.
And we, well, Doug and I rode out there together. I con I contacted Chris two or three times myself.
This is after, this is this is just recently, this is whenever they were dumping the extra materials down there.
This is Monday, May the sixteenth?
Ninth, since ninth.
Somebody else is dumping family?
It went it went to.
Yeah, they were they took they took extra material down there. Took they were taking the clearings from other from other lots down there.
I don't know about that one. I haven't contacted on that one. I only know about the the deck and then they mix some stuff together. This is a continuation of the same thing, I guess. I don't know.
This is May the ninth. I remember texting back and forth with Chris. I don't remember getting this, but police have been out there, the fire's been out there.
I'm I'm not showing an email for that address. I've searched my entire inbox.
I know the police chief, uh, police, the fire chief told them they couldn't burn there. I know that for a fact. So if he's dumping more stuff there, he's going to have to haul it off somewhere.
Or mulch it apparently.
Or mulch it.
Did you ever get that?
You're not going to be able to mulch that deck.
Well, is it something you want the council to do or Jerry, that we're not doing?
An email from him.
I never got an email from him, so.
I I well, I guess, you know, why why would, well, of course, mayor says he never got it. Doug says he never got it.
Chief didn't get it.
Doug didn't get it. Look, I searched my inbox, so.
So they're addressed to your inboxes, right?
I don't know. This is a print off. It could have been time. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just saying I.
It could have been created, but not mailed.
They could have been printed. No accusing of that. I'm just saying I get a lot of emails and I don't have that one.
We should be able to search our email, even if it's spam or something. It should be able to pull it up if it was ever delivered and none of us are getting it, so. One thing I would say, when it comes to any enforcement issue, I've said it before, and a lot of people go to social media and air a complaint and they think the city always knows about it and and then no complaint is made to us and we don't know about it. And so it it looks like, why is it the city doing something? We're all talking about it. And it's because no complaint's been made to the right people to know about it. I don't want to let that happen here, but that does happen. Here's a fascinating thing for this one right here. I've been there. I know exactly what you're talking about. There are houses all around it.
Yes.
What I don't understand is why hasn't somebody seen something? Because it would make noise. There had to be a huge truck dumping something on that lot. They had to back back down on the lot. I saw the, I mean, I that's what that's something I don't understand, you know, is why hasn't anybody seen or heard anything to report?
Good point. I I I don't know, but the way things have turned out, I would I would just almost bet that the contractor that's that's now, uh, going to build a lot dump the new deck there.
Hey, can I can I I apologize because this has been wrong. I this is another topic, if that's okay. We have an opening on the A P Commission and there's a young lady, Mrs. Melissa Wells. I do apologize, Jason. I didn't get this to you. I was thinking that the work session was next Monday. We were getting ready for doing other things. But I'm going to ask if we'll put a resolution and I'll get it to you, Jason, so we can have it on that agenda on Monday night. A and P has already voted on it? Yes, it's already done. Uh, they have an S T R here in town. She's a.
She's a woman? Okay, go.
A therapist, uh, yeah. But anyway, really nice young lady. Had a lot of conversation with her. Is she replacing someone currently or is she? Uh, no, no, we thought we had a person, but.
So she's filling in.
She's an occupational therapist.
She's filling in vacant chair.
She is. Which which vagons is she? You know what, I'll have to look that up. I just know the person.
What do you mean by which vagons?
Okay.
It's not at large.
No, it's not.
I didn't even pull into that. I found it in my junk mail and went there because our system said it's unverified.
Food or.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell it to May ninth that I have nothing in my inbox.
Maybe it was Richard.
It gives the it gives his email address as an unverified sender, so it'll automatically send it to junk.
That's it, all of us. Probably true of everybody else too.
Yep. Can I always pick up the phone? Or text, because I'll get the text.
Well, number one time complaint I hear from people. And if you sit out and say, well, but those number of people to be here next Monday night to speak their three minutes. The biggest complaint that they have got is that they cannot call community development and speak to anyone or get a phone or a return call. They do not get a return call. The man that lives across the street from his house on number fourteen Constance Service said he called community development a number of times when it was being built to point out what was happening and no one ever returned his call. So.
I don't get that complaint. They don't they don't call me and say staff is not returning calls.
Probably not. I don't.
I wish they would. I mean, if any of you.
You can't fix it unless you know.
Well, Jason pointed out, why do people call us? Will people call us because they can't call community development and get a return call?
And people also call you before they ever call. I learned a lot of stuff from you all that never came.
So it doesn't come across your desk?
Goes straight to you, run the mayor.
But as I said, if if you won't, I could have, I think I could get pretty much get a pretty good number in the room here next Monday night if you want to hear.
Tell them to come on.
Three minutes.
I want to hear.
Why don't you do a jury?
Do you read one here?
Yes, tell them to come on.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else that I put on the table? All right, that's adjourned then.